Today is September 9th, 2011. It is 6:05 PM and we'll call it order.
It's 2012.
What did I say?
2011.
Jesus.
Don't floss.
It's been a long day.
Oh, I'd like to see that.
Well, you know, it's funny. I said to myself, "It is the ninth, right?" So it's the September 9th, 2013 Planning Commission meeting. It's not off to a great start, but I'll call this meeting to order. And, um, but if any comments on our minutes from the August 12th meeting?
I thought they were great.
Great. I think I noticed that it didn't say that I left in Utah for over.
Yeah, I didn't notice that too many.
It was in the midst of the Mr. Cathcartson paragraph, I suspect.
It's probably somewhere in between this Mr. Valente and this Miss Magloire.
Right, I think it's between the two Mr. Cathcartsons. In between us. Well, you can indicate I left at 7 o'clock, so.
We did up in the, um...
Oh, it's in the title.
Yeah.
It was right up the line on the side pole, which doesn't make it.
That didn't make it, huh?
It's okay.
Okay, well, never mind, that's mine.
Only my child made it into the meeting.
So let's have a motion to approve those minutes. I move to approve the minutes.
A second.
Okay. Any discussion, all those in favor? I, any opposed? Okay. Um, announcements?
I abstained.
Oh. You can abstain.
Yeah.
You can.
I'm here.
If you don't have... You can still vote.
Okay, yay!
Do you want the explanation as to how you can still do that even though you won't get?
It's fine.
Yeah, Caroline's here, actually, so if you want to abstain.
It's just weird.
It's just weird.
Do you have any amendments, the minutes?
No.
Okay. Um, there's been a motion made and seconded to approve them as they are. Did you vote in favor of that?
Yes.
Okay, so what can I indicate? Mr. Caden, is it Caden or Cudjarn?
Uh, Caden.
Caden is abstained. No strong, I mean, no support. Are there any announcements?
Um, I have one. Just kind of a simple one. Information, um, the Bradlboro Historical Society, um, has a, um, an additional location on, um...
I just noticed the very same thing.
What?
On the main road.
Yeah, it's on, um, Main Street, right in the, um, Metnasonic Building, which is the yellow house next to the church there. And, um, the side entrance, and they have a sign out front, it's called the Bradlboro History Center. And this month's exhibit is called, um, Unfinished Bradlboro. And it's, um, an exhibit in conjunction with you guys, the planning office, about different projects, um, that were actually never built. And they go back quite a few years, so it's very interesting to see if there's a regular exhibit of, um, the Historical Society there, which is also fun and interesting. But, um, I thought, I, I was open during Gallerie Walk and I went in and it was, it was fun to look at.
Does it have hours? Or do you know the hours?
Thursday to Friday, 10, 2 to 4. And Saturday, 11 to 3.
It's supposed to be up all of September.
Yeah.
Saturday, 11 to 3?
11 to 3 on Saturdays, yeah.
You know there's a bowling alley in the basement of that building?
No.
I was just talking about that.
Yeah. So this is, this place where the...
There's an alley in the basement of the White House, too.
Where the historical, um, Bradlboro History Center is, is a permanent place. It's another location for the, um, Historical Society to have a more accessible presence for stuff. And it's real interesting to see. But anyways, I just thought people might want to go look at that exhibit this month. It was kind of fun. And they also have a copy of the new town plan there, too. That's my...
Any other announcements? Well, I took a trip last month. They included a drive-through Detroit, Michigan. And it made me think a lot about how blessed we are in our planning duties not to have...
That'll do it.
So it's chicken first of all, yeah.
Not to have really serious problems, but there were also, there was also some kind of neat stuff going on there.
Right.
Not worth the time here, but, um, I was thinking about our meetings and what it must be like to do our, what we do there.
Actually, you know, it's become kind of a mecca for planners to go to Detroit to help save it.
I saw their 320-page city plan and, um...
We're close.
Huh?
We're close.
I know.
Yeah. Again.
Kind of makes you think both ways, but anyhow.
Is that where the Ford plant is?
I, I, that's in Dearborn. I went to Dearborn, too.
Did you go to the Henry Ford Museum?
Went to the Henry Ford Museum.
That's a great place, isn't it?
Middle Eastern food in Dearborn. It is good, but not for a four-and-a-half-year-old.
I don't know.
Yeah. It was pretty cool. Yeah, it gives light all morning, you'll be driving around there. There's no public here, so we can skip the public comment and go straight to subdivision regulations.
All right, so, um, the first thing up was to go back over driveways and private roads because there was, there were quite a few questions about that at the last meeting. Tried to have some answers and I don't have some of others. Tim had, um, made a suggestion about allowing more than three units on it, or three homes on a driveway. And he misspoke. He actually called me the next day after I did my research to confirm that I thought I already did.
That was nice.
But he, he realized that he had misspoke. His, um, he doesn't know if one that has five, it was named a road. Given a road name. Two or three. What I found is that the state 911, um, laws basically dictate after two, you know, two parcels, it then becomes a private road and gets named. Or gets named.
After two, right?
It's named after two.
It gets, it's named after two. So we can't have, um, you know, a whole bunch of properties on a driveway. It then becomes a name, in which case it's, it's probably just, uh, how would it be some sort of statement?
And some of those can be private, right? I see some of the little signs, private. And there's maybe just a few houses up there and they take care of their own.
Yep.
Flower, maybe, yes.
Yes.
You just lose your hand in it.
What's that?
You just lose your hand and then you drive around.
Yep.
You can keep a bag.
Why?
He doesn't serve anything yet.
Um, so the 911 number, 911, I'm remembering that's kind of as we thought it was. There was a question about the town building new roads and would it have to make the subdivision regulations? I actually haven't been able to verify that yet with the Public Works Department, what standards they would be building a road to.
Yeah.
I had emailed and I didn't follow up and I haven't seen a response yet. Um, you know, one view of it is they're not creating a subdivision, so they're not subject to these rules. Another point is that, you know, just by their currents, um, it will reconstruct.
But if we hadn't done it in the last 50 years, we'd probably have a better sense of how it actually goes.
I imagine that they're building it to some sort of...
Wilson's Woods, isn't that one of the most recent roads that they've built? That was in like the 90s, wasn't it?
I think they would have started off as a private road. It would have been built by the developer that did the subdivision. So that's, the more typical process is that the developer takes, that he builds the road to town standards and then the town, because it meets their standards, subsequently agrees to what they call take up the road, which is make a public road. But then the town's not obligated to take up a private road.
Do I remember you saying that the Public Works Department told you guys they actually wanted you to do that? Or am I making that up?
To what?
To include the town subject to these standards. How did that get on in the first place?
No. No. I mean, what I, I mean, I guess, so the logical part that I had is that for the town to build a road, you know, either along the boundary line of two existing parcels or to split an existing parcel, they would be required to build it to their own specifications. So, you know, basically, I just don't see much possibility of it.
Yeah, I mean, there are, there are some basic town road, um...
Standards.
Standards, but that has more to do with depth, um, you know, gravel, that...
The kind of engineering for the road itself.
The constru-, it's construction standards as opposed to design standards. What my question is, are there design standards that they follow? Are they built in a 50-foot right-of-way? Are they, you know, what are they, how are they choosing the travel way? My guess is they're probably following some sort of standards, but I also think we haven't fully done it, so.
Yeah. Have they weighed in in any way?
No.
Do they know that this is out there?
Yeah.
Yeah, they have seen it. I have had some way in, um, to go back to them with the full regulations. That goes to private roads. Um, the person that had reviewed it was supportive of having private roads built to the same standards as public roads. And you want to kind of confirm that with some other people because it could be kind of a high, a high standard.
Yeah, really.
Um, a lot of times towns have different standards for private roads and public roads. As far as I know, Bradlboro has them.
Right, but isn't that any variety?
Right.
Um, and one possibility would be to have, um, more gradations or, you know, more levels of road design that you could construct based on the number of properties that the road is serving.
So, you know, maybe, maybe a private road doesn't need to build it to the public standards, but of course, if they want it ever taken up by the town, it would need to be built to those standards. So we're still trying to work through that on the roads. I'm a little bit kind of in-between. I think I'm leaning towards the sub-standards for private roads, but I, I don't particularly see it to weigh in on that. So that's kind of straightening that up.
But even on a private road, a person might need to have an ambulance or a fire truck come.
Exactly.
Even on a private road, the people would need ambulance or fire trucks to come, so...
Is a limit?
It's kind of a moot point, seems to me.
Yes, but the minimum construction standards for a town road are pretty elaborate. In other words, you end up with a sealed, wide road with granite coating, with drainage.
Not everywhere.
Well, yeah, not everywhere, that's true. Well...
You couldn't have a dirt-paved road?
You could have a dirt-paved road. But it would, it means that they have a level of, um... That's what I'm looking for. They don't want to go on using the same term, but in a slightly different way. Their, their minimum standards are actually set fairly high. For, not so much high, but, um, they're very conventional. So if you were to propose a private road that took more seriously the question of accommodating cars and other road users, or wanted to make sort of a minimal impact kind of road, there might be some challenges. You want to have a challenge, building a private road, you should have a challenge gate and that taken up by the town subsequently. Because they have pretty, um, large-scale dimensions that there's a, there's a basic limit on. And so one of the more recent roads that got built, um, was for the High Point, um, state subdivision, which is above Guilford Street there.
Nice road.
Yeah, it may be...
Seems to be a nice road.
It is a nice road.
Yeah.
Maybe, you know, but it's a pretty expensive road and it's, you know...
It's pretty wide.
Pretty wide. It's a lot of white stuff.
Yeah, that's stored in, not, and stuff.
Might we be able to solve the problem in a more simple way by putting something in here so that, say, a road serving five units or less could seek a variance from a DRB? I mean, just pulling those numbers out of the air.
Right.
To the road standards?
Yeah, just so it might be less complex to avoid developing a whole set of lesser standards from scratch.
Yeah, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with that, but I, I mean, I think what we are better suited by is actually coming up with standards that people, you know, that are roughly, um, conform to the number of parcels or, you know, the number of units that you, and dwelling units, or whatever it is that you, you can say.
So, oh, so they have multiple standards, depending on how many...
You can choose, you can choose one set of standards that was most appropriate from a, from a variety of things. Is that what you're thinking, Sue?
Um, I wasn't thinking that. I was just thinking, I was in favor of just granting neighbor power over the roads because I think it really is in the town's interest and...
Right.
So you want to ensure that the DRB would be the board, they would be very proud to be...
Don't, yeah, and funny because I don't think the DRB, this is where the whole...
Pretty technical thing?
This is where the distinction between the construction standards and the design standards are sort of really two different things in two different documents. Ultimately, the director of Public Works is the road commissioner and the select board effectively has the authority to, um, establish standards.
Right.
And so there's a way on which it would be stretched to delegate that, particularly the construction component.
Because they're not designed.
Right.
Only not designed standards.
Right now, we don't really, right now, we, most of the emphasis is on the construction standards and so we don't really have explicit design standards for the roads.
Right.
We're proposing them here.
Right, we're proposing design standards here. So what I would see is either the applicant chooses the appropriate level, um, of standards for the, the scale of their development, or...
And that's kind of built in because we're referencing the state standards and so that's based on speed limit and amount of traffic. So, yeah, there is some sort of gradation in there. If you're only serving five lots, then maybe you can have, you know, a lesser travel way.
But if we're making a second set of standards, aren't we effectively hardening on that just the same?
But making private road standards?
Yeah. And I'm not saying we shouldn't do that, but...
It's not the same as granting waiver power to the DRB because then the applicant has the ability to suggest a design and a set of construction standards that goes with it. And that's not something that the DRB would be able to render a decision on in a timely way because it would, you know, it's outside their area of expertise and arguably, I'm not even sure that get the authority, or you've got to grant that authority. So in other words, if you've got pre-established standards, and I think Sue's kind of making the point that we, we effectively would by utilizing the state standards, then the applicant has the ability to select from those standards what the most appropriate standards are.
But you still feel in some instances the state standards are too restrictive, too applied everywhere?
I'm not sure that, I wonder if they're maybe a little restrictive for private roads.
Yeah.
Right.
I don't want to say restrictive, it's just more that they're, um, the, the minimum, the minimum is set pretty high.
Functionally, you're sure?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
And so you get a very, what I'd say is that you get a very conventional road design as an outcome of applying the state requirements, as you would with ours.
Yeah, I, I think the state has made some strides to...
Yeah.
So they're not as wide and they're... It's better than what we have now.
Right. I mean, this is sort of coming out of from a completely different perspective. But a lot of the debate that you see going on around, um, the Strand Avenue project is really an effort at the town implementing a, a capital improvement, meeting current guidelines, confronting the reality of a very old road that clearly doesn't meet current standards. And so, you know, one version of that is that you've got 2013 standards banking into some kind of...
150-year-old.
150-year-old road, right? And so with all, you know, with all sorts of skewed expectations. So just as I'm sort of sitting here thinking about this discussion, I'm thinking about, if I was the Public Works Director, how eerie would I be of really opening up something like that again?
If you were a conniving person, not that there are any here, could you do a subdivision that was just, say, two lots on a very large parcel? Build a driveway that is not remotely close to the standard, like, say, up a really steep hill? And then subdivide it again?
So you've broken one parcel into two and then subsequently you break those two parcels into, say, two each and again, say, that were four?
Sure.
Yeah. And then have a substandard driveway?
Like you really should have done a switchback.
Yeah.
Which was, I said, wow, I want to get to that parcel, cheapest way possible, I've got a good...
You could do it under the current. If you, if they're to stay private roads, yes, could.
But I also think it depends on what standard the DRB's doing.
Well, I'm supposed to think about this stuff when I'm...
Well, I wonder, I wonder, you know, at that point a subdivision would be before the DRB. So what, you know, I do believe the DRB should make them upgrade that road, whether there are required switchbacks at that time, or maybe you could argue that...
Yeah.
You know, it's...
We may want to subdivide it the second time.
Well, any subdivision does before the DRB, so it's just...
So then the question of, right, so then the question of access comes up in that second subdivision process?
Yeah, they say, well, the road's already there, so what do you want me to do, you know?
Uh, well, if it's got the same owner, do you like, you shrug and go fix it if you want the subdivision? I mean, you can try that as an answer. You like this up, you, you want the subdivision, then fix the road.
It's thought up steep to my, issues of, you know, drainage and...
Sure.
All kinds of other stuff that would have to be...
Well, we see those situations. Would this ever happen on an in-town lot? Like, what if somebody was in the middle of Bradlboro somewhere? I can't remember an example right now, but like, if they didn't have a driveway and they were just relying on on-street parking? Like, let's say it was a one family and there was a garage and then you needed to a three family? You know what I mean?
We don't do...
Wouldn't really result in a subdivision.
It wouldn't result, right.
Yeah. But like, if you took a, I'm, I, I was thinking as far as, like, you know, how wide the road is would depend on whether or not you're going to park on it or your, the speed of the traffic. And if you didn't want to park on it, you should park in the yard.
If you're going to have a parcel with one family, with a single-family homeowner and you're proposing to build, subdivide and build another home, say, in the back, then, you know, you need to provide a driveway. And you need to provide presumably an easement protecting the ride for the people in back to traverse the parcel in front to get there.
And the easement has to be a minimum of 20 feet.
Right. So...
So as opposed to a 50-foot right-of-way for a road?
They'll give a 20.
A public road practically, here they...
They'll give a 20-foot easement for a driveway. Now, it doesn't go to the question of the quality of the driveway or even if it really exists, or a bunch of other things. But, you know, on some level, there's sort of the vibe you're within. If you'd like to buy that home in back, you'd like to see the driveway. And if they can't show you the driveway, then, you know, there's a question that needs to ask about, well, which trees would I have to cut down, you know, to access the house in back?
Yeah, you can't have a landlocked parcel.
Right.
I was wondering, would we send it specifically in here?
That you can't have a kind of landlocked?
Yeah, I mean, I was just, David says, oh, I was just curious, what you expressed.
But don't think we have an explicit statement that you cannot have a landlocked parcel.
Well, how could you allow subdivision without...
You can make a subdivision without dividing access.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was just thinking, maybe I should just say it anyway.
You have to, you have to show under the existing standards of the subdivision that, that, that the proposed parcels are a regular shape and are accessible, right? Isn't that a requirement of the existing subdivision regulations? So you can't, you can't come up with, say, something in the shape of a bailiff.
Never hurts to step in the obvious.
Yeah, I was just thinking, you know, preventing anybody from...
It's another layer of ideas. Yeah, it's just obvious, which is, yeah, I wouldn't say, let's not do that. But I think we've got, we've got, we've got requirements about shape and access in the existing subdivision regulations. And I'm hoping that they make it into the new ones. But, yeah, a statement about landlocked is okay.
It's good. Man, not all of us...
Yes, for the obvious, but...
Never going to happen, but, you know, see if some poor guy's...
Stranger things have happened.
I mean, we know that there are landlocked parcels out there.
Yeah.
Confounding this. So, anyhow.
And then, you know, more, sort of more abstractly, the process of subdivision is really the process of making a road, providing frontage for the parcels. And so once you, I mean, there's a minimal math. You can maybe make two or three parcels. Well, depending if you've got an existing large parcel and it already has frontage on two roads, you could possibly make six parcels and not have to provide a new road to access any of those parcels. But at some point, for you to make parcels, you have to make frontage. To make frontage, you have to make a road. And that's the key thing here. Or, you know, a private driveway, or you have to make access. And so it's either going to be an easement, a driveway, or a private road, or a public road.
Helicopter pad.
In fact, um, a person with professional, uh, land-vating experience associated with the town in the past does own a landlocked parcel on West Bradlboro. Just saying, someone who's known very well.
Interesting. Do we have anything more to do around that public roads and driveways?
No, it's still kind of...
I think that's sort of distracted.
Yes, all right.
It's still a little work in progress, unfortunately, but we need to worry about it.
Right.
If, um, once you sort out whatever it is you have to sort out, do you think it'll be that hard to come up with whatever standards you guys...
No, I don't think so. I don't, I think it's just...
Right.
That's good. Development density weighting values.
I have a question about, you know, the examples that were submitted and I wondered...
Could you just speak up?
I'm sorry.
I mean, it's...
It's my head.
No, no, it's not even that you're in the way. You're just, your voice is going that way. But if you just spoke a little louder, I could hear you. You just talked spoken personally.
Sorry. I have a question about the examples that Sue gave us, additional examples. And I wondered, under a traditional development scenario, would the yield be as great as you put forward? Or in, when you went through the whole process?
Even Liz always has those great questions.
What I did, um...
You can regret this.
Just because I thought it, it produced an example that seemed to be a lot of taking when in reality, I don't think that would be the case.
Well, we, um, I spoke to the zoning administrator in Norwich and...
Is that better or not?
Yeah.
Yes, that is better.
Is it better?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
About what we're talking about, right, the subdividing landlocked? If you have a landlocked parcel...
If you have a landlocked parcel, let's say you do subdivide, are you required the easement? Are you required to put your utilities through that easement or right-of-way?
A truly landlocked parcel wouldn't have that.
You couldn't develop it until you remedied that.
Right, so you need to establish an easement. But it's not, it's typical now for, um, utilities to follow the driveway and then also in an easement setting, that they'll double opposite the easement. Well, provide access as well as utility access. But there's no necessary reason. It could be, it's sort of almost like an, uh, you know, if the utilities are going along one road, um, and your driveway is off another, and your home site ends up being closer to where the utilities are on the other road, you could establish an easement across your neighbor's parcel that was the shortest possible distance for a utility easement. And that's for you to negotiate with your neighbor. And there's plenty of examples of that with overhead power lines. And that's the most, that's really the only, in rural settings, that's really the only utility access that you're requiring.
In town, like, a sewer line or something?
Uh, so, yeah, I mean, that still could be the same, you could have the same scenario, but that would be a little hotter. You basically, what I'd say is if we've got the water and sewer network, you've got regular shaped parcels that have got access. I would say that likelihood of landlocked parcels in that setting is somewhat less. And then you would follow, there, even there, you would run the water and the sewer per the same easement that the driveway was in. But it doesn't have to be that way. They're going to be denser than that.
So what I could have done was I compared a couple of recent subdivisions with what the existing regulations say and what the density would be permitted under our proposal. So this is a property up off of Green Hill Parkway. It's these three parcels up here. The reds are, again, are the constrained, in this case, with steep slopes. Under, under the existing zoning, if you looked at that parcel, which is a little over ten acres, you could get six lots out of it. It's real residential, one and a half acres per, um, per lot, or minimum lot size. The property owner actually did three lots out of this. Under our proposed regulations, because it is off a private road, it actually would not be subdivisible, because in the end, the developable area is just under six acres. So this is a situation where, um, where obviously much more restrictive than existing. I want to come back to this, because Rod and I did some site visits on Friday, and we found that the private roads were in better shape than we had expected. And perhaps in the weighting factor, I happen to think that we're probably too restrictive when it comes to the private roads, based on what we're proposing.
And we've had some puzzling, yeah, we'll get back to it. It's difficult to figure out how to have a factor that's sensitive to the private road problem.
Uh-huh.
On, you know, the right, you know, just sort of the right weighting, I guess.
So we'll contact.
A subdivision off of a private road is what you were saying.
What's that?
This is for a subdivision off of a private road.
This one, this one's a little bit peculiar, because it's a private road for a private road.
Yeah.
Oh.
And that might also influence what we were talking about before, about the road to you.
Yes, yes, that's why this kind of gets a little bit weird.
Um, this is Bittersweet Lane, it's off of East Orchard Street. And it's in a real residential, this is ninety-one, East Orchard Street, Orchard Street goes off.
Just the Sisasimo?
Yep. It's about thirteen and a half acres. The constraints on this actually are showing that there's about three acres, so the developable area is ten point seven. Actually, though, we actually have a subdivision plan of this, and there is a wetland. There's actually a couple of wetlands that are showing on the survey that the engineers did that did not show up in the GIS database. So what you're seeing is in steep slopes here, but there actually is a wetland that kind of runs in here and on over here. So it actually is more constrained than this is showing. I took the access being from East Orchard Street.
Can I interrupt for a second? Under this, though, they could say, well, that's what the GIS says, so that's the calculation, right?
Um, I have to think about that a little bit.
Okay.
Because they are, you normally bring in a subdivision, you know, you bring in this existing condition, so this, the GIS gives our department a good place to start and have the discussion, saying, eh, we're looking at about eleven acres of developable area. It doesn't get you away from needing to delineate wetlands and do all this thing on your subdivision plan, so.
And you.
Is that a request in these regulations?
It's part of the, um, material that you need to submit.
Yes, moreover, even if they tried to slip that one past us, just hypothetically imagining that they're kind of, what you said before, not totally on the level, they've got to go through the act of fifty process. And, um, that would also review for wetlands, because it's over ten acres.
Yeah, this was what I said before.
I didn't want to use that word, because it just, um.
Back in two thousand and eleven?
I don't deal with people like that at all, and so.
I mean, I'm looking at, I, I think that the way it's written now, you could make an argument that the planning services has to use the GIS and that the applicant can choose. Here we have a ten-acre parcel, I understand what you're saying.
Right.
But I think the way it's written now, it says, the amount of development, developable area has to be based on the GIS, and the applicant can choose to provide data, providing more accurate indication of features.
Well, you're the attorney, so I'll take your word in one way, it's going to be interpreted.
Okay, we can finally on here. Page twelve, B two, paragraph three.
Paragraph right above the box.
In determining the amount of the developable area, yada, 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 this planning services department shall provide the location and total area of each of the features identified in table two point one, based upon the designated data in the GIS.
So we need something that says if there's a discrepancy between the site survey?
Well, I don't know, I mean, I'm actually fine with that, because I have thought that the GIS was quite good. I didn't realize that this situation existed.
Well, the GIS has, I have to go back and look at that plan. The state data has class one and two wetlands, these could be class three wetlands, which just haven't been mapped.
I mean, I like it being the GIS, because it allows someone to look it up and know what the town would be using. And I think it would be frustrating to a potential developer to look up the GIS and say, okay, here's my developable area, do all this calculation, and then have the planning services department come back and say, well, sorry, but that's not the way it is. So I'm not really suggesting a change.
Why, why, yeah?
I assume.
Because I think, you know, surveyor would want a, you know, you would want a survey to provide the natural features.
And we are required.
Yes, I think.
That's a requirement, that's a section two, or something.
So it requires.
To do a subdivision.
That requirement and this paragraph together.
Are we requiring a survey that shows all those things?
Yes. So maybe what we need to include here is some kind of clause or sentence about any kind of discrepancy between the survey and the GIS layer needs to be resolved by the survey.
Well, all you really have to do, I think, is say that it's based upon designated data in the GIS for the survey by the applicant. Because that's all the information the town's gonna.
Which ever is more accurate or restrictive.
Yeah, I would, I wouldn't go with the restrictive, because I think that the slope data here, I mean, it's generally pretty good, but I think that you could get on-site and then, so, and actually, that's more restrictive, yeah. I think it's, I think the surveyor is always be more accurate.
Right, I do too.
So when we're talking about the slopes of the land, already has been altered, it doesn't have trees and nature and stuff on it.
Yes.
With some, with some engineering, you could, you know, put retaining walls in and be able to make it so that you can put a building on it. But where, is there a threshold there? Or we're just saying, well, there's not a building there now, we're not gonna put, we're not gonna put one on the, on the land at all?
So basically, you're saying, like, how much are they allowed to alter? Like, you know, if it's a steep slope, but it could, it's a minor steep slope, and it could be resolved by putting in some sort of retaining wall and not have a huge impact on the area?
Yeah, I mean, especially if it's in town, you know, if we're trying to encourage development within that growth boundary, then.
There are a lot of steep, steep areas in town that people have managed to tase them on.
Yeah, we will be having this discussion a little bit following the field trip. So this actually probably underscores the importance of the survey. The GIS layer that we're using, you know, is a data resolution that's significantly coarse, more coarse than what a survey, what a surveyor would produce for the parcel. So I think, I think the language should read that the survey, you know, that the information should be sort of, the information should include the review of the survey as well as the GIS layer. And to get to your point, the reason why that became more apparent to us, it's conceivable that you could have, um, enough plateaus, smallish plateaus, to enable either the construction over road. So at least, you could have a series of plateaus where you could, with minimal cotton fill, across a steep slope, establish access to one or more plateaus, which could each be big enough for one or more homes. So there's a way in which you'd get that information, once you did a survey. We would, we would have all blocked out as red, that there's steep slopes present between this point and this point. But you could provide this information with, you know, actually, what you've got is a series of steps, which is a fairly common landform in this part of the country. So it's not just, you know, like that. Under those circumstances, I would say the obligations on the applicant through the survey to demonstrate that the kind of impact that we would be concerned about is, um, not as severe as it might look, because it's all covered by the red, meaning steep slope, because they've been able to establish a series of plateaus. But then they need to show that as part of their approach. I still think, for us from an environmental standpoint, the disturbance to the slope and disturbance to the site are factors that we want to be concerned about. And so, even though you could show a road that was sensitively designed to link these plateaus, and then you could talk of homes that were placed in a building envelope that was relatively flat, you've still got the, um, the removal of trees and the impact on, you know, sheet flow and a whole bunch of other attributes of the land, which was still meant to be addressed. So I'm not saying you, I still think our concerns are valid, I guess what I'm saying. But with that much more detailed survey information, you know, an applicant could demonstrate that their impact is somewhat less. I think we still have to resolve the basic question, and I don't know, so that's what you're saying, I guess.
Well, I mean, one, one area that I, I keep looking at the street by the Letstone Brook. You know, where Union, Elliot, the five-way stop, and then that street. Uh, Arch Street, I don't know.
It comes down?
Williams.
Williams Street?
Okay, so all of those houses are, assuming they're a hundred-year club claim, maybe not.
At the bottom?
Certainly, but kind of.
They're, they're part of some of them.
Yeah.
So in, in that case, because that's already been developed, a big portion of it, you know, what if, what if somebody said, well, I own, I own this parcel and I want to rebuild my house? So you either raise it up so you can get flood insurance, or you build it, you burn it back into the, I don't know, into the sloping terrain towards the back of the parcel. And I'm just, I'm thinking of these scenarios about, you know, you have a piece of land, and do you always want to build on top of it? No?
This isn't subdividable land, right? So this doesn't apply to the subdivision next, does it?
More of a site plan question.
Yeah, that's a site plan, what, I would, yeah, yeah. Both in terms of, both in terms of scale and in the particular location, that's a site plan question. Here, here we're talking about a process whereby a developer is proposing the formation of new lots. And we are assuming that they're gonna go from a greenfield site, you know, a wooded, you know, a wooded parcel with slope, because that's why we're talking to them in the first place. And they're proposing some form of subdivision with ultimate construction. And so, um, that's what we're trying to address. I mean, the other part of this, it's always really important to hold on to, particularly here, is you could have a subdivision where the road goes in, and the building envelopes could identify, and there'd be a very long period of time between that process and any actual construction. And so, it's, sometimes it's that phase of construction itself, which has its own set of stormwater permitting requirements attached to it. But that phase can actually have a really big impact. If it just happens to coincide with some pretty bad events, you can get some really major damage as a consequence, and so.
Before all the houses would be built, you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So there's a way in which we need to be thinking how to set this process up so that there's still protection for the physical environment and subsequent property owners, you know, twenty years out. So, you know, it's just, so are we settled here that we think that the survey is probably the final resolution, and that should be the one?
That governs.
That governs?
That's fine with me, in that case, I think it should just be changed completely to say that it'll be based upon the survey rather than based upon the data in the GIS program.
So in this instance, what we're doing is we're using the GIS program as a first pass. And then the next phase is that the applicant responds with the survey?
Yeah, if, if it's, if you guys require it, or just.
We would use the GIS to establish that they need it. So if they've got red, then they have to explain the red.
But let's say, like, the problem that you ran into with the wetlands that aren't there. Let's say GIS shows there's no problem.
And there is a problem.
And then we go and survey, and in fact, there are class three wetlands, let's say, there.
The survey should just, the survey's already required.
If they've got into the survey, why not just cut the GIS out entirely?
I think that the GIS will get mentioned in step two on page eleven.
Yep.
Um, because that's when they're meeting with us, and we're gonna give them, of course, an idea of what their, of what their density is. And that's where we would use the GIS. And I think, again, that's still, no, the actual is gonna be based on the survey that you're required to provide. And that's no different than right now.
So are they always required to have a survey?
Yes. Because, because that's a, because there's another thing, so if you can imagine, try not to do this too often. In this building, there's us up on the second floor, and we're gonna see the developer come in and ask questions and obtain information about the zoning and other land regulations that we operate with. But if they go ahead with the project, they're also gonna have to file information with the town clerk. For them to file the documents that bring these new parcels into existence in the town clerk's office, they're gonna have to show a survey, you know, that's part of the process that they pay now. So they pay to have that sort of been downstairs. And then we work with, basically, the same information, but we also have it in our office. So they can avoid it, is what I'm trying to say. And so, either, because that's gonna get, you know, like, she's just, so it has to happen, you know? So, and that's not negotiable, that's just one of the things of bringing. So, and that's not negotiable, that's just one of the things of bringing a new parcel into existence, and then thereby getting a text map parcel number, and all those, there's all these steps, and you can't do it without survey.
I've heard it really tough with your presentation.
Yeah, it's, it's a, no, it's supposed to be interactive.
So between tradition, existing zoning and what the new would be, how does this parcel play out?
So this one, um, they built seven lots here, and, um, under the existing zoning, they would have been allowed nine lots, um, one and a half acres. It's got onsite well and sewer systems. Um, under the proposed regulations, they would get two lots. So again, that is more restrictive, and this is coming off a class three gravel road.
So why is, I'm sorry, I'm a little unclear, why would the proposed regulations be such, so significant? Like, what about this?
So what about it, the, the issue here is that it's, um, the weighting for a class three gravel road is, um, has a factor of two. So if you take the base at one unit for every two acres, and then you multiply it by two, you get one unit for four acres to set the density.
So if they upgraded the road, they could get more lots?
Yeah, that'd be the grading.
Well, this is so light also because of the septic, right?
Yeah, but the septic, um, is the same factor, like, we, we've gone with the, you know, the most stricter of five, so there's...
If it was just class three, couldn't you have five?
No, because you have ten, you have 10.7 developable acres.
Oh, per two acres, yeah, yeah.
Well, then it's per the four, because it's on a gravel. So the question is, is that gravel weighting?
Too high.
Too high.
So...
But I also want to remind you, on this lot, there are more constraints than they're showing. I mean, you're probably looking at another one and a half acres of constraint, maybe one acre of constraint.
So I think we all are getting comfortable with the wetlands and the steep slopes. But you're right, what you're asking to reexamine is the roadway classifications. And because the wetlands and the steep slopes would not currently be prohibited from development under the current...
That's right.
Right, but...
Wetlands would just, but they, in a different way, like, no, they wouldn't, they would still count towards them.
The yield.
Yeah.
So it's the roadway that we're worrying about now?
Yeah, the thing that kicks this the hardest is the...
Is the class three road.
Is the class three road.
Just like the last one, it was, that it was on a private road.
And that's a pretty significant difference.
Yeah, so if this was, if that was a paved road, because part of East Orchard, no, no.
Orchard is paved.
Orchard's paved, but East Orchard doesn't pave at all, but if it was paved, what would the difference be?
Oh, a lot.
Oh, it would be, um, it would be the same, no, because that's got onsite water and wastewater. It'd be the same as what you're looking at here.
Well, then, okay, so, hang on a second then, so is it the road, or is it?
Well...
What's the term?
In that situ, in this situation here, it's because of the road.
Right.
The road and the wastewater are the same, I guess.
Right.
Um, if you take out the road scenario, then it's the wastewater.
So why, why is, why, why is the wastewater suddenly becoming more restrictive?
Because it's onsite.
We had this conversation today, today, too, looking at this, um, but like, should, should the water and the wastewater even be a factor? Should it just be, should the road be the only determinant?
And if they're doing a septic, they have to get a permit.
They have to get something with a state.
It'd be tough to get, right?
Uh...
I don't think it's tough to get, but I don't think you're gonna get a permit on one acre lots.
Right, that's fine, but are there situations in which they would get the permit, or would we feel need to further restrict them? If they could pass over that, or?
So what you're saying is, assuming the state is willing to grant them a permit, is there something about that? Is there an example that either Sue and I can think of where we thought, oh, I wouldn't have done that?
Yeah.
Um, or I would have made them do this, or something. Um, I don't have to say, I can't think of one. I mean, part of the problem is that it's a bit of a black box for us, because you go off to the state, you get this, you get your wastewater permit, we never... Or we get back this, a copy of the permit, and you sort of go, ah, so they got their wastewater permit. You don't, there's, we don't, we're not involved in that review process at all.
What about the well?
There's a separation requirement, obviously, between the wellhead and the septic system, or anybody else's, so that, in, in a setting like this, I think that's what ends up setting up minimum parcel sizes to some extent for each parcel. So if, if you're getting a conventional subdivision, where each home site accommodates the home itself, the driveway and all the things that go with the home, then a well and a septic. Um, and if it's, the soil perks well enough, and you can use a conventional septic system, so then you want a backup septic site, you're really looking at more than an acre, a bit, a bit over an acre is a minimum parcel size.
I understand that, what I mean to ask is, if you were my favorite dubious developer, and you took a parcel, and you subdivided it out, and you got your septic permit,
Yep.
And then said, oh, I want to save some money on the well, so I'll get cheap well. Is there anything out there that we have to get a permit for the well?
Yeah, you need a permit.
You need a permit for the well.
Okay, so there's...
In the state, the same office gives the well permit as well as the septic permit, so there's...
So they're gonna make sure you have enough water and enough waste to put in?
Not enough water, you can still let it, yeah, you can have a crappy well, there's nothing stopping anyone getting a really bad well.
Well, you have to do the front test, okay?
Yeah, that, I mean...
How would somebody do a well if it was, you know, have a certain amount of water?
Well, you try for a certain amount of water, is what I'm trying to say. So conditions are, you know, wildly variable, so they can, you can have, you can have a bad well, I mean, you just can't. But the, the key thing that the state's looking at is there's enough separation between the well and the septic, um, leach field, so that the possibility of contamination from the septic system getting into the well is reduced, right? And then not just be your parcel where your well is and where your septic system is, but all the parcels around you as well, right? So, you know, you, 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 your neighbor at the back fence can't have their septic right on top of your well, right? So, so that all that, all they're doing is establishing the separation distance. There are other geological attributes to a well that determine whether it's a good one or not so good one, and that can just be... The quality of the water can vary and the rate at which it produces, there's a minimum rate, I mean, of... And, and the well digger will go and go and go until they find the right, you know, the right amount of water, but...
It sounds to me like that justifies us getting rid of sub section 3.2B. And if you did that, you could get, I, I mean, you could just keep dealing with roads, which I think is a little more palatable. Am I crazy for saying that?
I've kind of been leaning that way.
I would go further and to say that we should introduce the concept of fractions.
Oh, no, fractions!
For the, for the roadway classifications, because these whole numbers end up with a yield that's very restrictive.
Right, well, well, it's kind of clumpy, you go from one extreme, there's not very, there's not a lot of sensitivity.
Let's deal with my idea first, and yours, does anybody disagree with getting rid of B?
So, hang on a second, 3.2B as in?
The whole thing, actually.
The thing about water, it's water and baseball.
The distinction between municipal or onsite wastewater.
I think, in my mind, the reason I'm comfortable with getting rid of it is, I think that is more looking at the water and the wastewater and whether it's onsite is an attempt to control minimum lot size, which we are not trying to do here, so I don't, that's really, that's a density factor. The state regs are gonna control what the lot sizes are within the subdivision, we don't, we want to stay out of that. That's what we said at the very beginning, at least, so...
Can you agree? Okay, so, so let's get rid of B, and then let's deal with your fractional idea, which sounds kind of slick. Can I just have a quick suggestion before we...
So before you, before you do that, before you do that, if we get rid of B, what happens in this example, just out of curiosity, does it go back to?
There wouldn't be any requirement based on water.
Right, so it would only be two. So you're talking about a gravel road, you're still looking at two lots. You're looking at a class three paved road, you would be looking at four lots. Yeah.
So, okay. So four lots would be if it was paved, two if it was gravel?
I should bring the subdivision plan in, though, I mean, it still might seem like it's not fair enough, but if you actually look at it, probably, yes. See, I've been out there, the red areas are not necessarily doing justice up here.
Well, should that's not on a private road?
No, it's, well, it is now, but when, if this was to be before the board, they would be coming in accessing the class three.
So when this, so if this was coming in a private road, they'd only get one? Am I reading this right? Because it says private roads are times three, and so it's two.
If, if, like, in the last one where you got, in, in the last situation, I think you had a class three paved, then you had a section of private road? Um, if that was this, like, you know, there was a section of it that was class three, and then there was an existing private road, and this was extending the private road, um, then it would be?
Six acres?
Six, yes, one. Which was back to my point, is I think we need to look at the private, but another thought about that.
Yeah, yeah.
If we made a private road...
So we need, so, yeah, okay, so, wait, hang on, so just to be really clear, page 13, bottom half of that table, the suggestion is to mix it, right?
Yeah.
Is it?
And you can also get rid of note one.
Right, so everyone, and so everyone's clear about that? All right.
Man, no, I sound like I'm only interested in simplicity here, but would amending the private road to a times two alleviate this? In your minds? Or, and I don't even want to make it...
Couldn't you, in technicality, have a private road that was up to the standards of a class two road?
Oh, did you know that? It's not in there.
Oh, yeah.
Um, well, yes, it's funny you say that, David. The regulations says there, right now, we are requiring private roads be built to the same level as public roads. I mean, that goes back to the other, and we need to resolve all...
Right, that crazy discussion that we had at the beginning, right?
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, I've got, when we went and did, you know, looked at some sites, I mean, you know, there were some steep parts of private roads, but there's steep parts of lots of public roads, and they weren't necessarily...
For instance.
For instance.
And they weren't necessarily in poor condition, um, so...
But we'll, we'll get back.
We had talked about, you know, if we're on private roads, or I don't know if we want to do the fraction thing, maybe we should match this up.
What is the goal that we're trying to achieve that might be helpful to review?
In my mind, the goal that we're trying to achieve is to, um, go back to the town plan. We kind of want to avoid a lot of development on the undeveloped far western parts of town.
Right.
Right.
So, so the two zoning districts that we're focusing on, that's the predominant land use zoning district for the western two thirds of the town, the rural residential and then rural, and then...
So...
We have, we have a lot.
But a private road is, is, could be, anything could be a, I think we need probably a better distinction or definition of what we don't want about private roads.
The issue here is, it's not the ownership of the road per se, it's, it's the design and the condition of the road.
Right, right.
Right.
So you think we could just go paved gravel, class four?
Well, isn't the fact that it's not paved, isn't that, what's the distinction between class four and class three?
There's three, class three can be both paved and gravel, yeah.
It's town maintenance.
It's town maintenance, and in class four, the town is responsible for maintaining the bridges and the culverts, but not the road itself. Which does raise a question about how you're supposed to drive from one bridge to the next, but, um...
I'm a class four, we're science, I'm a class four road, there's science, we don't do this or that.
So that, but let's get back to the goal, because if you talk about tropical storm Irene,
Yes.
all the people who lived on class four roads had severe problems with access and safety and all these things, so that's the goal we're trying to prevent. So what is it about a private road that we definitely protect the public from?
That's no exception, it's just called paved.
Yeah, well, I think that's when we were out and about, that was kind of, that was kind of the realization.
Yeah, we were on class four roads that, some class four roads that, that presented no bigger challenge to get by than, um, private roads or the other way around, and um, we were on class three paved roads that didn't necessarily, that weren't in such, such a significantly higher standard over some of the private roads, that we thought that there was a distinction that was important to make there, in other words, I guess what we, to say it around a different way, you had to really know where you were to be able to distinguish between, oh, this is a private road, or this is a class four, or this is a class three gravel.
I think we need to define exactly what it is that you're trying to
Right.
prevent
Right.
in, in restricting this private road, because it's not just the private element of it, it's the way it's constructed.
What, yeah, when I, when I started this, I had one in particular in mind that, you know, because you get more development down a private road, then you have to deal with how you upgrade the first part of it, and it becomes a real challenge, because,
Right.
you know, then you're trying to widen right away, and, you know, make these improvements, and how it's gonna be paid for. I think I had a pretty, um, negative view, I guess, when I started looking at it and thought that was why we didn't really, really want to be encouraging development on private roads.
But if we make them...
I checked in with Norwich, actually, and I thought that he had an interesting point. They don't have any weighting factor for private roads, and part of their reason for not doing it is that they did not want to encourage chopping up of the parcels on the public roads. So they wanted to, they thought if, well, if there's no penalty for a private road, maybe somebody will put the private road in, and then they'll have, you know, furniture on the private road and not constantly...
Well, there might be something in the private road in the way that it's constructed, that we would have a problem, but it gets back to going back to public works and asking that same question.
I did send that question today. What, what Norwich actually does is they calculate it from where the class of the town road that it's accessing. And their categories are, um, I think it's the paved roads, you know, class one and two paved, or class one, two, three paved, class three gravel, substandard class three roads, and class four roads. Um, I don't know, you know, we've got some pavement condition, and we've got some information on the roads. I don't know if our public works would go so far as calling them substandard.
But I like that, but I think it would.
Does it cease to become a substandard road?
What's that?
When it gets paved, does it cease to become a substandard road? Does that work?
I don't think so. But it has to do with the bed.
But they're not gonna, but they're not gonna pave, they're not gonna pave a gravel road without bringing it up to current standards, right?
Well, they...
Well, well, the town may not, but a private, a private road owner may.
Well, I like the use of the term substandard, because it means more than the private road, and we depend on what it is.
If we did that, I mean, I think it's not just private roads that are necessarily going to be substandard, I think that there's probably some substandards, some others, some standard. Yeah, they're old roads, they weren't built, and drainage isn't very good.
And then someone, if they wanted to increase the development yield, would have an incentive to improve the design of the road, the construction standards of the road.
See, see, the, see, and that goes back to, um, Sue's scenario, that she, that motivated her interest in the first place, which is, there are examples, I think you and I were working with other towns that had this problem. So you would have a development that they're happening at the end of a private road, and there would be disagreement or an inability for them to resolve the conflict about maintaining or upgrading the private road. So then you're confronted with this sort of weird, why am I being prevented from further subdividing my parcel, which is my right? Because these people can't get their act together with the maintenance of the private road, and the answer is basically, sorry, you bought, you bought a parcel at the end of a private road. It's like, and so you're gonna have to figure it out one way or another. It's like, and so you're gonna have to figure it out one way or another. And, um, and, you know, we basically don't wanna be in the middle of that. And so I feel with the appropriate use of standards, both construction standards and design standards, we're resolving the question of new roads and what, and what the qual, what the, what the quality or the standard of a new road would be. So we just need to be thoughtful about how these rules fit in with existing roads that are of these variety, private, both that meet a good standard and a substandard, and then class four and then substandard gravel class three. I think there are some problematic stretches of road that are paved in class three, but I don't think there's an enormous amount of them. And I think that there are, some of them are not very old and they just weren't built very well. But they, they also not, you know, you would do a road upgrade, it would be expensive, but it's physically possible that you can do it, it's not.
I'm assuming that we don't have a handy mapping resource to indicate what the substandard roads are.
I didn't get that response. I.
Right.
I'm still, yes, yes, still.
Right, so it's still out there. So that, yeah, and so from a sort of maintenance and operations standpoint, public works is obviously gonna have a view as to what constitutes a substandard stretch of road or a substandard road or whatever.
Not only, is it all need public works or does emergency rescue come into play? They may have information that might be helpful.
Yeah, I think it's mostly public works.
Um, there is one map that shows like the surface, gives a ranking of the surface conditions, but again, I think substandard roads, it's not just surface condition, I think it's more of the drainage and like that, so.
I, I have to disagree with you on this one, Liz, because I don't see how you can define substandard roads without getting into really complex stuff and roads change.
Right. I was just saying that the distinction between private and public isn't a good enough indicator.
Of the quality of the road.
And that if we're striving to reduce, you know, public problems with the road, it's not whether it's public or private, it's whether it's standard or substandard.
What if we divided by classes and said that for private roads, we leave it to public works to determine its equivalent? And then we've got the equivalent value? The equivalent density.
Well, in any case, I think we're gonna have to wait to hear what public works says about the questions that Sue's asked them before we have the right information to go forward.
Maybe you can, you can, you can direct me tonight to kind of look into with public works for these lists saying these roads are substandard. Or.
One tropical storm can change a lot of roads, you know?
One heavy rainstorm is mine.
Yeah.
Yeah. And also with the substandard, like, let's say it's substandard now. The person comes before the board or whatever to get a permit and is restricted by the substandard, but then they don't actually plan on continuing construction until after the public works department, which may have already planned beforehand to upgrade it to a standard road.
Right.
So like, what point do you pin to, like, is it always, you know?
Yeah, I mean, what I'd say is, there are some known roads that the town has that are old roads that it's had control of for a very long time, so Stock Road comes to mind, right? Because I don't know how many of you familiar with Stock Road, but it's.
Very steep up too.
It's, yeah, it's steep and narrow, it's steep and it's narrow and it's windy. And so if you're gonna build that road now, you wouldn't do it like that. You know, it would be bigger, it would be wider, you'd have more switchbacks probably and so forth, and you'd have all more engineering involved, and you might lay it out quite differently. But for the most part, I guess what I'm trying to get at here is we should be able to get a list from public works of, of roads that fall into that category for them.
There you go.
Right? So, that it's a known list of, ooh, that's not a good road. I wouldn't wanna see a subdivision off the end of that road that was too big because of the implications for keeping that road open and the, and the impact of extra traffic on that road. They're gonna know, they're gonna know those roads, right? So, and Black Mountain's a perfect example.
Right.
Which is a little road, um, that actually takes quite a bit of heavy traffic and, you know, hem it as a consequence. Um, and, you know, the good news about it, for one reason or another, is the immediate section of road isn't suitable for the subdivision, but that beyond, further beyond, it is. And so for us, it would be a question of how appropriate would it be to add development in this area beyond that road if what it means is constant increased impact on the stretch of road, which you have to travel on to get to another part of town for the most part? So, um, I feel like, I hear what you're saying. I think we can simplify the whole process to some extent, um, by just getting a meaningful list from, from public works. I think where people are proposing new roads, we've got that lit, I think we've got that figured out. It's, it's more how their proposals fit with the existing road network and whether one of those, whether their subdivision is in an area that has to be serviced by one of these some of those subset roads, which is not a very long list, actually. And so even post Irene, you know, good roads got put back together relatively quickly and relatively easily, because they were already good roads. Really bad roads, it was sort of like some scratching and like, do we really wanna do this? This road already sucks, you know? Um, and that was a bit more challenging. Um, but for the most part, you know, having driven out there extensively Friday and on the weekend, it's not like we encountered anything that was like scary.
See, this is.
Oh.
This is why.
I didn't notice anything scary.
The reason I'm kinda fighting this is because I think we are parsing a lot for a distinction that will be, is it gonna be one unit per four acres or one unit per six acres? And, you know, I, I, I can't believe one unit per four acres versus one acre, one unit per six acres is really, at the rate of development we're experiencing in the town of Brattleburg and to have a substantially different impact on the road.
Well, you, you gotta take into consideration if this is gonna be, the regulations coming years from now, because you never know, we could go through a second building boom like we did in the eighties and suddenly people are flooding there, you know?
No, that's true, but, I mean, four, four acre lot is a pretty large lot to require that someone has four acres, and that's four acres of buildable area after you take out wetlands, steep slopes and everything else.
It's not necessarily that there's gonna be proliferation of them, it's just there's gonna be one that could be more safely developed. So should we wait to hear back from public works?
I think we should.
Yeah.
It would be a useful piece of information. So the idea is that we wanna get rid of the private roads as a distinction for sure and figure out how can we deal with it? I mean, we also, to get too far, but thought about, well, you know, if you, if you look at, we want the close, the development closer to town, is it, you know, does it have to do with certain areas of town? So maybe it's an area between ninety-one and Sunset Lake Road that's, you know, a certain factor and then past Sunset Lake Road, it's another factor and.
It, it would help us enormously, for instance, when we, when we talked about this in the town plan, what we, to go back to some of the points that Liz was, was making. We were concerned that if we had, if, if, if we did not consider seriously the impact of continued low level development in the far outer reaches of town along poor quality roads, or at least in areas where to get access to Route nine or a major road, you'd have to traverse a, a, you know, a questionable road. Then we were gonna exacerbate the problem that we encountered with tropical storm Irene, which was that we had not large numbers of people isolated, but a significant number of people isolated for an extended period of time, and that it was a drain on emergency services and it was difficult for them. And with some forward planning, we could, we could minimize that. Um, and there was nothing in our land use regulations right now that really discouraged people from isolated locations, fairly high density, assuming that they're always gonna be able to get access to Route nine or a major road and, and get out of there. And what we discovered was, in fact, you probably shouldn't make that assumption. So, one thing that we talked about, and we sort of toned down some for the hearings, uh, was the question of focusing the development in a north-south kind of pattern and using ninety-one as kind of a western boundary and the river as the eastern boundary and focusing on the redevelopment and development activity inside that area.
Should we offer bonuses if it's within that area?
Well, either bonus would probably come out in the kind of the density, you know, pretty relaxed, which we already have. I mean, you know, you can develop that area pretty intensively as long as the land is not already conserved in some way, because there is some immediately east of ninety-one that need to run the retreat that falls to that category. But if you, if you pull that out, yeah, you can, you can develop it pretty solidly. So the question comes for us, how do you actually convey in land use regulation language?
That goal.
That goal that's pertinent to the, um, pattern development in a western two thirds of town. One approach would be to use what Norwich does. Norwich is a very nice kind of hypothetical town, because it does have a really obvious village center. It's not quite in the middle of the town, but it's pretty close. And then so they just measure from, from, from the middle of the village. They go, oh, you're more than four miles from the middle of the village, this is what's happening to you. And so they can do it really easily. We don't have a settlement pattern like that. We can't say you're X numbers of miles from the municipal offices or, or, or the post office, because it doesn't mean anything.
Or T-shaped.
Oh, so we use the rule on the rural residential?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think that's great.
Then one layer we could use for decision making is, we could identify a hierarchy of roads, right? So if you're within a certain distance of, um, Connector Street, then you could get a density factor that's different from, um, if you're much further away from the Connector Street. So if you're a certain distance, say, from the green, from Greenlee Street or Aimcel Road, that part which is sealed, then you may experience a different density factor than if you're two miles further out on that road, which is when it tends to dip, right? Um, simply because, you know, that's what we're trying to aim for. We're trying to cluster the development as close to the existing infrastructure as we can manage it. That's, that's really what we're trying to get at. Um, and we haven't really found kind of a mathematical equation that's dependable and gives predictable results no matter where you apply it in the rural and rural residential district that gets at, if you're near existing infrastructure, you can develop more intensively than if you're further away.
But maybe public works do that.
They could help. We know they don't have a hierarchy of streets, we know they don't have a listing, a formal listing of streets, um, over and above the classification of one, two, three, three gravel and four. So there's no other criteria that they use that identify kind of districts, for instance.
But it'd still be useful to get that information and then look at them compared on a map with
Yeah.
developable areas.
Right.
For sure.
The thing, your point, Liz, is introducing fractions is actually, or decimals, if you wanna go French, um, is, or dozens, should we call it dozens? That's actually a useful concept, dozens. Um, then, um, we could, you know, that might be, that might be where we end up, some. But we need to sort of be basing it on something a little bit more.
Well, I think we should default. Maybe go to breaking with those numbers, but also get a better definition of what it is that we're trying to achieve with a substandard road.
Right. Right.
Also. Like rounding? I know this is crazy.
How many places to the decimal?
I'll go free.
But like, like for instance, you, you said here, the developable land is ten point seven acres.
Yeah.
Now, let's say the difference between the developable area being ten point seven and eleven is like the difference between whether or not they can have like two extra lots on that. That's a small, it's a small fraction to have a significant impact on what they can have in that area.
It's like all those families with two point two children.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's very uncomfortable for them to, you know, they're gonna have arms or legs, yeah. Um, yeah, but you know, they get used to it. So, um.
We can. We can look at that.
Right.
You know.
We can put it in something that says you're gonna round it up.
I mean, they, they can all, I mean, they, they can still come for various uses as well, if it's within, if it's very close, right?
Yeah.
Not in subdivision.
Not in subdivision.
Site plan.
Site plan, it's not way, way.
But, yeah.
You can't really weigh that bit.
You know, and just, and just say for like, let's say someone literally gets like one tenth of an acre is the difference between whether or not they can have the type of subdivision they want or not. That's a very small amount of land to make a huge difference.
So what do you, what do you say then? We should round, we should basically round?
Be able to round up to the, consider, when considering how many lots there are allowed to have, they could use a number that's rounded up in terms of developable area.
Even if it's below point five?
Uh, or.
And all the math rules are we going, you know?
Yeah, it's a big question, actually. Because then ten point one becomes eleven. Right. Yeah, I think, I think we should stick with the math.
I'm fine rounding up, but I think it should round down too if it's under a lot.
That's a, that's actually a good coverage.
Yeah, I think, I think it is.
There's a lot of mathematical concepts here.
So rounding, you're gonna go with the international convention of point five?
Point five.
And up is up and point four and down is down.
Yeah. So if it's really close, you'd slip your survey or a couple hundred extra.
After one to one hundredth of an acre.
Well, like, one more example. Let's see, it actually probably gets a little bit closer. So this is five point summit circle.
Oh, my God.
It's rural residential, I know you can't see it very well, but it's, it's kind of all up in here, it's thirty lots. Um, it was, this.
So one of the lots don't?
It was about, it was over a hundred acres, it was like a hundred twenty-three. What's that?
So one of the lots don't have a steep slope?
Uh.
Uh, no.
It's kinda hard to tell. Um, this one doesn't.
Or, yeah, maybe one doesn't have a slope.
Yeah, that's, yeah. It's pretty steep. All the way up on the top. But if you've been out there, you probably.
Yeah, you'd only expect some of it to be steep unless you're in Minneapolis, right?
Yeah. So more than half of it is not developable. I came up with a total of about forty-nine acres developable. Um, it accesses through the Guilford Road, which is class three paved. It's got municipal sewer, but onset water, which doesn't matter, I won't instruct that tonight. Theoretically, under the existing mode, you could get eighty-two lots off of that. They only built thirty lots, not all are developed, there's actually some, some of those thirty lots are conservation lots.
Right.
Um, there's maybe three of them. One may have been a land swap, something like that.
Yeah, they swapped with the park, I think, some land, right?
Yeah, it does something funky at the end there.
Yeah. Under the proposed regulations that we're looking at, they could get twenty-four lots. So that's actually, considering that there's a couple conservation lots in there.
That's pretty close.
We're really close on this one.
Right, and if you dropped out water?
Well, water is.
I don't think it would make any difference here.
It didn't make a difference here, but.
Well, that's a really good example.
Yeah. Unfortunately, in the rural zoning district, we just don't really have any subdivisions other than the one lot at ten plus acres, so I actually couldn't come up with any examples in rural, which is, you know, is interesting in and of itself. Any subdivision activity out there is the one lot, eighteen acres, or, you know, some, some large amount of acreage. So these three that I showed you were more recent ones. So these three that I showed you were more recent ones in the rural residential.
Yeah, and so when we talked about this this afternoon, and when we talked on Friday as well, and one way of looking at this is that the, setting aside how difficult it was for the original developers to make any money out of this, right? There were some, because they didn't, there were some assumptions about what the market would bear and how much you, you could develop this big parcel.
Well, this was right before the financial crisis, right?
Yeah, well.
This is like '07, '06, wasn't it?
No, before that.
Before.
It was more like '04. You know, actually, so it was around.
It started around that time.
Before when people actually had a lot of money.
Yeah.
And not much, you know, thought process going on. And still didn't work. So, so, you know, if they looked at the land, which, you know, is 120, rounding out 124 acres, and they platted out, um, 32, 33 total?
32.
Well.
Including, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but didn't we say there's some conservation lots?
Yeah.
Oh, so there's including, oh, that's right. Okay, so say 30. That's what they thought the market would bear. And I think that gives you a reason, and we're not saying ours, our number is not that much more severe than that. And I think that that, even when you're planning out the rural question, when people are subdividing now in the rural part of Brattleboro, they're dividing a much bigger parcel into still very big parcels in the vicinity of 18 or 20 acres or something like that. So one way of interpreting that is that, you know, that's what the market is also allowing or calling for. So we wanted to make sure that we weren't wildly off here, but we also wanted to make sure that the land use regulations that we came up would protect a pattern of land use that the town plan discusses and calls for, but is not so wildly off compared to market outcomes, then it would, that it would be, you know, conflictual. And so basically, what we figured out is that this example and a couple of others, we're probably, I wouldn't say perfect, but we're pretty close.
Reasonable.
Reasonable.
I just, I'm sorry, I was thinking about the roads thing we were talking about. I was just remembering, I lived on Ames Hill when I was a young kid, and one time they had to shut down Route 9 and they rerouted Route 9 over Ames Hill.
Oh, they did.
They did during our.
They did during our.
They did during our, too. That was, it happened once when I was a young kid. I was just thinking about that, that Route 9 traffic going over Ames Hill.
It was, well, you, well, see, one of the things that most Vermonters didn't really clue into was that they had shut Route 2 in Massachusetts, west of.
Charlemagne.
Charlemagne. Actually, east and west of Charlemagne. So you couldn't get to Auburn in New York without either A, driving to Rutland, or B, driving to Springfield, Massachusetts, and taking 90. And there was a couple of days of 91 that was pretty rough.
Nine on South was anywhere.
Nine on South was close.
It was the section between.
Yeah.
Green River Bridge.
Yeah, it was.
Right, you had to get off. You had to get off.
And closer.
Go through Springfield, get back on. Driving to Springfield. I mean, it turns, you know, a trip which is, you know, under two hours into all that.
Yeah.
And then the only way to get to Marlboro for more than a week was Ames Hill and Cook Road.
Out of the first. Cook couldn't start when the bridge was out.
Yeah-ish.
Yes.
Yeah, Cook did. Yeah, I think they did temporary one in one of those.
They did, but.
Right, so, so, yeah, so.
No real point in the conversation now.
No, it's just pretty amazing when you think about it.
Yeah, when you think about like.
Because there is no alternate.
No, and what we're really looking at, and to take it to a bigger scope, which is what the state's looking at, is resiliency. How does our zoning and what we're doing here with zoning affect the resiliency from not just hurricanes, but any kind of event? And that's, you know, the bigger, I mean.
Right.
Because we're nitty-grittying around this road stuff, but that's really what it is. It's about.
The infrastructure we have.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you can have the paved class 2 road that's going to get washed out in the flood.
Sure.
That's right.
You know, Route 9 gets.
It's going to have to use Ames Hill.
Yeah, no kidding. Right. Route 9 is not.
But it's also just like.
It's a major east-west road.
You know, you don't look at it and go, well, they'll fix that if you survive. It's not a problem now. You drive along and go, first of all, you do this. And then as you're driving along, you think, that's connected again.
Oh, sure.
I just worry that as we get more particular, we're actually taking a step back and coming closer to essentially having zoning districts again, which is what we were trying to avoid.
No.
No.
I think with the higher discussion, it might feel like it. And we're not going road by road, though.
The road, yeah, we're not going road by road. What we would be doing is establishing, you know, it would be a modification. The Norwich thing is, you're this many miles from the center, you get this kind of density. And, you know, in concentric circles, the closer you are out of the village, the more dense you can be. Probably not how people in Norwich feel about it, but what we're trying to figure out is whether we can say something similar, which is if you're X number of, you know, miles from a connecting road, or wherever, you could have a level of density that will be different from further out.
Like you're X miles from a class 3.
Yeah, right.
It's effectively creating a zoning district.
It does, it does feel that way, doesn't it?
To me, it does.
I think we've already done what Norwich has done by creating our own, you know, the 90, the, right? Wanting to encourage development within this one certain area. We don't have it in the same way that Norwich does, but we've already done it in a way. So now we're looking at the next.
Well, the alternative would be to use a fraction or decimal as the factor for density calculations.
This is what we have last.
Right.
This is just.
Depending on what public works says about substandard group lots.
Right.
I think we're trying to do too much. And I think if we're going to address flood issues, it should be what we're doing, say the full erosion hazard zone and things like that. And to me, when I think about this, I think, well, on gravel roads, you don't want too many properties because in that season, it's going to be out. And that's why I think it should just be gravel paved, class 4 or private road coming off class 4, and then be done with it. And when we want to deal with things in the flood area, we do it with a flood overlay or something like that. Not because we can't do it here, but it just, I think we're getting into the perfect being the, you know, the good territory and making this more and more complex when beauty of it is its simplicity.
I think, I am in favor of the, the, the page.
Three people disagree at once.
Yeah. I am, I, I'm not sure I'm on, I think it might take the town a long time to get to what's a connector.
Yeah.
I think I'm less sure that that approach would work. I like this one. I do think there is something to the substandard that, you know, we still want to have that conversation with public works. So for me, it would be the paved, the gravel class 3, the class 4, and then if there's some sort of a substandard category, I think would be acceptable.
Can we just want substandard in with class 4? Hasn't that really seemed.
No, because I think, no, I mean, it's not to me.
Because you could have substandard.
Because there's probably, yeah, there's probably some, a decent amount of development on class 3, or on a substandard for class 4 is, there's no obligation for the town to maintain it, so therefore, we shouldn't want people living on it.
Yeah, class 4 is just sort of a straight-out, not a good idea.
So you guys feel that the difference between, say, four and six acres would be meaningful between a class 3 and a substandard class 3?
Between a class 3 being, I'm sorry, you're saying.
I'm saying if we're drawing a distinction between a class 3 and a substandard class 3, what it would probably look like is basically, it's like a four-acre minimum on a class 3 and a six-acre minimum on the substandard, probably, after you've taken away the non-developable area. And what I'm saying is, is it really, is that distinction worth having its own separate rule?
Have to see what they are, see if it's worth it. Honestly.
So just.
They can't envision.
Right, yeah, yeah. So you're saying treat class 4 and substandard class 3 as the same, as the same category?
No, I actually don't think that after having heard your response. I'm saying paved gravel class 4 taller today. Because I think that four units per buildable, one unit per four buildable acres, I think is reasonable. Or maybe we make it 2.5 or something to account for worse roads. But I think that that is a reasonable density for all of the gravel roads I've seen in town that are not class 4.
What did you say, 2.5?
I just think it's split the difference.
Well, I was on a road today that was paved road, fine peaches, and the woman said, Bonneville? And the woman said, oh, no, you don't want to go back that way because that's class 4 road, and you really.
She actually said that?
Yeah.
I love it.
You can't get back that way. You got to turn around and go back the way you came. And so that made a lot of sense to me. The road that we were on was already dirt road, and I'm sure it wasn't, I'm sure it was substandard, but there was a distinction between that substandard and the class 4.
Yeah, I don't agree with what I said before. I think that was stupid. When I suggest a monthly class 3 with a class 4, upon further review, I wish I could withdraw it because I don't think it makes sense.
Okay.
I never heard of it first.
They recommend sure.
Yeah, right.
So when you start with paved gravel.
So which, how the.
I'm just thinking paved gravel class 4 or private roads coming off class 4.
I don't think you'll get a private off a class 4.
What's Meadowbrook?
Meadowbrook is a class 3 paved.
Paved.
Paved?
Yeah.
Maybe not all of it.
Partially.
Partially.
So the top, and then you.
Yeah, it's like it's paved on the two ends, then it's dirt, you know, gravel.
Gravel.
Well.
And there's, and there's private roads off of that that are.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Are we saying, isn't there a dirt road that, are we saying, no, gravel, dirt road, actually gravel?
We don't distinguish between dirt and gravel because that is just the maintenance situation. I mean, theoretically, they're supposed to have gravel on it.
Dirt is just packed gravel.
I'm pressed to find.
I don't remember. In the old days, back in Alston, I could be wrong, but I mean, I remember the dirt roads changed to paved roads by just, you know, every couple of years, they'd take the oil truck around and just kind of oil them, and after a few years of that, it became a paved road.
If you go on Ames Hill right after what's, it's gravel and becomes dirt again quickly.
Yeah. Yeah, the gravel gets blown off and washed off. And so you find the gravel actually in the ditch on the side of the road.
Blocking the culvers.
Blocking the culvers, which then flood the desert full of.
Yes.
The gravel. So the other thing is that you can't drive as fast on a gravel road as you can once the gravel comes off, that's when it's fastest. When they just break the road.
Less fun.
It is less fun. But when they just break the road and it's got stones all over, you're, the cow bobbles around more in a less predictable way. If you really want to go fast, that's good.
So I think I have enough direction to work that.
Well, I mean, I'm just, I'm just one vote here, but I think maybe like next meeting, we should decide either James is wrong and let's forget about his idea and just get rid of it.
Well, I'll come with options for this.
Right.
Yeah, there'll be a number of different options.
I'll ask the publics and, yeah, figure out what's feasible. Your voyeurism is coming out and wanting to find a solution.
I think, I, I'm trying to get some meaningful feedback from public works is going to be key.
Yeah.
I also think we have to hold on to the principle of the ratio of, you know, developed land to undeveloped land. It's, you know, thinking, you know, literally to the backing right out and looking at an aerial photo of Brattleboro, what level of fragmentation and development, physical development are we willing to accept in rural, residential and rural? Because I think this, this, we've got reasons, it's not, and I'm not just saying that as an aesthetic consideration, I'm saying it's sort of a practical consideration about the land form and what the town plan expresses and how we've arrived this. We're concerned about hazard, and we're concerned about poorly planned development that would place added demands on town-provided infrastructure. And we're concerned about the challenges that emergency service personnel will confront.
Resiliency, resiliency.
Yeah, right. And you can summarize all those things as resiliency, but part of it also is that there's a set of values that we're attributing to rural, residential and rural lands that we also feel is important to preserve them in and of itself. And so we're just concerned that we don't lose sight of that goal.
Well, this map here illustrates what we're talking about in the big picture pretty well. These brown areas are just the few that are the class 4 roads.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, yeah, what I'd say is it's not huge. Yeah.
Then there's not, you know, the subdivisions in those areas is there's a good number of conserved lands out there.
Right.
There are, you know.
Considerable.
And there really aren't that many private road parcels.
Well, there are actually closer to 91 than there are out in the western.
Yeah, right. Some are on the left.
Yeah.
Right.
But you do get pretty effectively by separating out the gravel, a lot of that rural area.
Yeah.
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 And with the exception of this kind of weird flip, a lot of the more developed areas follow the paved roads.
Yeah.
What is this flip on the western edge?
What's that?
Which flip?
The blue flip?
The blue flip, the big blue flip. The humongous, the humongous lots on paved road, it looks like that South Street, if you went to the west of South Street.
That's Ames Hill.
That's Ames Hill.
Is that Ames Hill?
Yeah, but Ames Hill isn't paved.
No, 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 it's the one that goes to Guilford with the preserve.
Greenlee? It's going to be Heinzburg.
Do you think that's Ames Hill?
Yeah.
Well, I don't think that's.
That's Ames Hill.
That's Ames Hill.
This says Ames Hill right here.
Oh, oh, I see, that's the paved part that goes around towards Guilford.
Right.
And, okay.
I, I'm sorry, I lived in the portion that is the blue.
Yes.
And that portion is not, that's not paved.
That's not paved. We're not the other.
It could be, those are humongous lots.
Yeah, no, that's not paved at all.
And in that section there, it starts, it becomes paved like right down here.
That's where the split is.
Where the split is.
Right.
Right, right there. All the rest of this is dirt.
Dirt, until you get way up to the very top and then where Marlboro is, and then it becomes paved again. So I don't know why all those are blue.
And Ames Hill isn't even paved there. The road that's paved is, is South, South Road. And Ames Hill isn't even paved there. The road that's paved is, is South, South Road.
Yeah, I think.
Because the only road that's paved road in Marlborough is South Road.
Right. So together, back, back here is.
South Road to the parts of college. That should all be up there. And all the water that, we should keep it there.
That does look, I mean, in other words, this is dirt.
That should all be dark green.
Not private parcels.
Well, I would say that.
I have to figure out what the parcel data is going on there.
I would say that strengthens my point if that's wrong, that by following these roads, we are following a decent development pattern by tying the density to them.
Right. If you, if you figure out, if this is in fact an error, then the use of the road was.
Because that would be dark green, which everything else.
And I think it is made to be dark green to be honest.
They're arguing a stupid point for like five minutes. Have we sidetracked too far more representation?
No.
Are there other standard, are there other comments on the development density besides what we're talking about there from commissioners or staff?
Not on that one. Oh, sorry. Well, yes, staff too.
I know, I know. We were just very firm. What about the other standards in Article Three that we're scheduled to discuss tonight? What do we have there?
Well, the idea you recommend is to look for it and see are there places that we should put written standard or stronger?
I like it very much.
There's definitely a mix of shall and should.
Mostly shall though.
I think if I recall, Tim was kind of advocating that, I don't know if he was looking at, looking for where we use shall, there should be waiver criteria or we should figure out if anyone should have waiver criteria. I don't necessarily feel everything with a shall needs to have a waiver.
If we come up with a waiver, it should be based on what we think needs a waiver.
Right.
Right.
Not this concept that a shall should always have a waiver.
Yeah, I think the use of the word shall. So Tim's, so Tim's basic argument is wherever you direct and require something, you should allow the applicant to have that requirement waived. And it's like, you know.
That doesn't give him the guidance that he asked for, does it?
Let's be clear, we might not exactly said that, but I think that there was a suggestion to look at, you know, maybe where we should do some waivers.
I wasn't here for that. I don't disagree with the idea that waivers are good, but I think we should look at the issue.
I think when we look at waivers, we need to think of the specific issues. So if we're waiving something on a road standard, what are we going to, what is the criteria for getting a waiver? I think right now there's a lot of looseness to waivers.
I think we should always keep our goals in mind.
And that was my point about, so, so Tim was basically trying to use the concept of a waiver as a kind of a miniature fuel mechanism. You're making this an absolute standard and I want to have the ability of an applicant to, to offer an ultimate level or setting for your absolute standard.
Well, I mean, we allow people to offer an alternate plan if they don't disagree with the buildable lot calculation. The density incentive bonus is we can't really have an alternative.
Right, bonuses would, or, you know, bonuses. I mean, it's like, oh, you like the bonuses, you don't like the.
I mean, maybe it's worth arguing that someone should be able to say if they're at the bottom of the dirt road, right where the paved road ends. They should get a waiver, I don't know. It just doesn't seem to me like there's much room for.
I think it's more waivers than the other, other standards.
Yeah.
Like the envelope?
Like the envelope. Standards, we've already kind of discussed that.
Don't we have a relief mechanism for the building envelope? Where you can find your own if it suits the standards, if you don't like the one.
Well, you do, you do designate your own building envelope.
Right.
I mean, we're subsequent buyer.
Subsequent buyer, a subsequent buyer can propose an alternate building envelope as long as it conforms to the criteria for establishing a building envelope.
Right, so I mean, it's not quite a waiver, but it's certainly a relief. I don't know. Do, do other people disagree with that and you know, this conversation?
I think when you look through this, and if you haven't, do it for the next meeting and get me your comments. I mean, I'm looking, you know, some of the, I think maybe what Tim was encouraging, we really feel strongly about it, make sure it's written strongly. And where, you know, there is some, you know, we discourage this, we do that. So, you know, here's one on minimize visual impact on page 15, development within open fields is discouraged. I'm comfortable with that.
There were, there were a series of those questions that I thought should be strengthened because they were too vermonty, you know, discouraging rather than being definite.
People will say mean things about you if you develop in a field.
I think that is pretty ambiguous.
You'll be here when they mention the car if you.
I mean, Tim, then it goes on to say, we're gonna do it and, you know, shouldn't be on the climax. I mean, I think it is kind of, but maybe.
But I just feel if there's a goal that we in the town plan wanted to address, then we should have standards that are definite about addressing.
And then do you think that we shouldn't have, we should only have definite standards or should we, because it's definitely not written in that line, but, so, but maybe.
That would be my choice.
Is that we only have standards where it's definite?
So hang on, let me go up this, down the way around. So where we can establish definite standards that should be written definitively, right? And not waived. And where we can't write definitive standards, we should allow some kind of wavering thing?
I don't.
I don't, I don't think we've got, I mean, at all, so it's making me very startled, but.
If there was, when you were talking about plateauing or tearing a development. That would be an alternative plan. But I just think, you like, if you want to protect visual resources, then you should protect visual resources. And if you don't, you know, it's like saying you really shouldn't do that is tantamount to not having it there.
So, so in this example, which is on page 15, it's D2. Should it say basically building envelopes shall not be located on agricultural soils?
You could destroy a whole lot, lot that way though.
Yeah.
I mean, there's so much prime agricultural soil in the rural area.
So, well, I mean, that's a definitive statement instead of dancing around it. I mean, so it either gets dropped or it gets definitive.
Well, so, you know, I think this is a hard conversation. I don't have a definite answer yet. And like James, I'll potentially argue with myself, but.
I just say stupid things and then take them back. That's it. Not much to learn.
But I look at sort of, we have a problem where we need more tax revenue. And more buildings equals more tax revenue as much as we all hate development. And the more shells, the stricter we make this, the harder we make it for people to build and the higher income people to have before, before developers start developing. I'm concerned about restricting ourselves because of all the other budgetary problems that come with not enough building.
So maybe they should be definitive with a hardship element that people could prove or not.
Why don't we, if we could, yeah, if we could go back to the issue here, so presumably the argument for discouraging development in an open field is it potentially breaks up the field and eliminates its economic use as a field as of late a day. And. Right, right. And so, so I don't have a problem with saying that, that the reason why you want to prevent or discourage development in a field is that they'll view itself as a resource that has some, you know, that we're value winning higher than something else. I guess the puzzle comes when, you know, you can point to both historic land patterns where farmers' houses are on the edge of a field. For convenience as much as anything else, it's where the flat land is, it's where the environment is, you know.
Yeah, the road and the, yeah, the infrastructure.
And then the other thing is that a meadow, which could also, you know, be a hangfield, even though of itself has an aesthetic quality that some people may be wanting to access. The question is whether they want to plonk a house right in the middle or on the edge of it, I'll set aside. But what I'm trying to get at here is, are we making some kind of this, are we, are we making a ruling or a decision about discouraging development in an open field? Because A, the economic value of the field and a future use. B, the visual quality of the open field not interrupted by a McMansion. Or C, the natural value of a meadow, you know, with the, you know, biological diversity and, you know, wildlife patterns that come with a meadow. Or C, you know, like, so there's all these, what I'm trying to get at is, I'm okay with whatever we settle on, but we need to be really clear why we're settling on that. And, and I don't think that the language is necessarily detailed enough or clear enough to give an example to a potential applicant that, look, we've come to the conclusion that you can be on the edge of a meadow and we might accept that. But if you're gonna walk, if you're gonna move right into the middle, so if this is the meadow, you've got, this is a choice, this is your house in McMansion, or this is your choice. We could live with this, we could live with this, but we really don't want this. So how do we say that? This is still encroaching to some extent on a meadow, but it's less than occupying the entire middle of it.
Well, I think just as we made sure that we were addressing the goal with the last discussion, we need to make sure that we're addressing the goal of each of these. And I think then that would also address Jim's statements because, you know, our goal was to reduce, for example, for flooding reasons and so forth, for tropical storm, I mean, in the western section of town. With encouraging development in the eastern section of town. So that should address the, the rateable question in terms of addressing our public safety goals. But I think these, these elements here on page 15 are addressing different goals that we set for them and plan. So we have to make sure that we really mean it and that they're really addressing them and what we want.
And I think that will help us either strengthen the language or pay it out.
I think it's also really, it's also kind of vague too, like we don't want to ruin a perfectly open field, but then, I mean, a perfectly open field is the best place to put a development and especially if it's within this. If it, I mean, there's very few left, but there are still a few very expansive fields within our so-called work boundary, as it were, where we in essence want people to build on those fields.
Because they're not steep slopes and they're not flatlands and they're not.
Yeah, you get into that problem too, which is, hey, look, they meet all your other criteria, so what can't I?
And you'd be like, well, because it's a field, you know, like, and then, and then you're never having anything built ever, you know.
Visual impact is also something that is somewhat.
It's so vague.
It is so vague. So maybe the whole section goes, and if we have concerns about fields, that it's in some sort of ad standards or something.
And agricultural standards is probably less.
Because like, if it's just an open field that's been there forever and had, you know, it's very different than someone coming in, they're saying, I just bought this farm, I want to turn it into a thing, you know, that has a definitive agricultural use right now. But a field for the sake of a field doesn't necessarily.
Because it could be haved someday. A house is a pretty permanent interruption to a field.
Oh, I agree. There's, there's no question about it.
Is this the same, what is it Jam Golf says in No Not To? In that case, was it you?
No, that isn't you.
No.
Really?
It was, um, it was a wildlife quarter.
It was a wildlife quarter.
I'd say it was like a wildlife quarter.
I think it was. But what I'd say, to go back to the visual impact one, you are throwing up this whole problem of my, my view down the meadow, which is part of my amenity, which is captured by my property value, should not be destroyed by your poor taste and the decision to stick something right in the middle of it. And my peers, my community members who are setting the standards should be responsive to me and my interests just as responsive as they should be to somebody else. And so actually.
In the end, you don't own them.
In the end, you don't own, but there's plenty of places where we say, look, it's okay, you know, we're gonna restrict land use on this parcel in response to community values regardless of whether you own or not. You know, it's like, so what I want to get at here, I don't want to, you know, just sort of make a claim about the benefits of.
Big one up?
Maybe the better, but, so, we'll get the backup.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. It's so much house insurance to borrow from TV. So, I mean, what I'm trying to get at there is, there is something important in visual impact. And you could make, you can, you could make a ecological argument for the impact of putting a house in the meadow just as readily as you could make an argument about not cutting down, you know, trees to make a building site. So there is this funny way in which we're trying to balance these things, precisely these things off. And I don't know, you know.
Because if we, let's say we, we don't want to build in the middle of a field, but if that means they want, that we want them to build on the edge, but then they have to tear down a ton of trees to build on the edge, what is the bigger disruption in visual?
Well, I think ultimately we need to justify it to the public and to the sled board. And so I think that, I mean, I see this perfect as a table, like take these standards, find something from the town plan that supports it and then let's go through it and see if it's an adequate justification. And if it's not, then it should go. We don't need longer regulations. We don't need, I mean, I'm looking at deep rate right now. I'm like, oh, you know, why is somebody's privacy, why are we gonna limit where one house is situated to another house? I mean, I don't know, I don't know if it's necessary. So I think we can call for it, at least these building and all of ones. Roads and stormwater and stuff, that's.
That's basically it.
Right, okay, so.
Don't we go on over other stuff? I thought maybe the bonuses should be a little more.
You get bonuses?
Slightly.
That will, where are you referring to?
Table 3.3 on page 14. Yeah, right. You just said it was a little too modest to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish, but that could just be.
Seems that we have decimals when it comes to incentives.
Yeah, we're pretty mean about them, huh? I will give you a quarter of a guerilla. And return for your entire baseball cap.
I mean, I can, I can do some scenarios for those to see.
What, what's the problem with James?
Well, my thought is that if you're not getting, if you're only getting five to 10%, that it will never be economically feasible to integrate low impact development measures in your project by design whatsoever. Maybe if it should be improved. Right, like if it was a gigantic development, I bet that 10% would really mean something, but because we have so few.
Yeah, if you're in a four-house development, it's not, it's not. And yeah, we don't, we don't do 50-house developments, it's not.
Yeah.
No, we don't. We will have plenty of time to change rules, but.
I really don't know. I really don't know.
You would definitely disrupt a field if you did a 50-house development. One of those houses would be in the middle of the field.
I think if we want to be encouraging the low-impact development, that it should be something with some real juice behind it.
Like 50.
I don't know, I don't know.
20, 25. I was gonna say 20, 25.
At least 20.
And this is where I have just no expertise at all and I can't really visualize.
Could you use?
This seems like not.
I mean, could, could we look at a scenario?
Yeah.
What, what the difference between, could we do like three levels though? Five, 25 and 50? And see what those different scenarios would look like?
It seems to me that might address your concern too, because that gives someone an avenue to make a higher value, higher tax-based project within the guidelines we're trying to get at.
So you want 5, 25 and 50, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Just a, just a, and then, and then, you know, maybe the end of seven for 20 or something, but then we have a range.
They've already got five there, so do we want five still?
Just a weird, the base model, yeah.
I mean, it's worth remembering that this is stack of ore in that too.
Yeah, actually, I was gonna point that out. You could, you could end up with, yeah, which is reasonably generous.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
But that's a good thing to be thinking about.
It's also worth noting that it's not like 100% is completely covered. It's simply a double of how many units you get.
Right, right. Yes, I think that's.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, that would give us a lot to chew on for the next meeting.
One of the things, yeah, I mean, it's interesting to think about the LID stuff in terms of what's the threshold for making it economical to do?
For the developer?
Yeah, you know, like, and I don't know how you really feel about. Yeah, you know, like, and I don't know how you really felt about doing that, but, you know, this, this probably isn't a magic point where it becomes almost worth it for them to incorporate LID than to pay the extra infrastructure installation cost. So you, you know what I'm getting, like, if you're thinking of a relatively big development and you've got two, you've got two developments. One, they're both nice and regular. You've got one that is five lots with potentially five simple family homes. LID probably not that big of a deal and it's too expensive for five. But if you're going for 50 homes to take your model, LID would be cheaper than the regular infrastructure because of the costs of actually implementing the regular infrastructure.
Right.
I don't know where that point is.
Well, well, is it, is it building the infrastructure or is it maintaining it? Because right now.
Yeah.
A lot of it is maintained by the town, so.
Right.
Or could you take that to, to like, um, summit circle? If that was, instead of spread out, if that was, and I don't know if the land would, would give you that, but if that was.
Usually it was a hot rise at the end.
Yeah, clusters in somehow in there, at least in the closer end, rather than making the road go way out there like it does where some of the lots are really steep and you're just gonna put a house on it and you really don't have a yard because it's all steep. I mean, there's a couple of those, that way out there. But if he had clumped all that in and left more conservation land, you know, what would that be like?
Right.
Be interesting.
Right.
I mean, they were way off anyways, you know, the high-end housing for Bradleboro, it's like, hello.
Well, I'm sure it's gonna get through a decision soon, so. All right.
I think we've reached sort of our maximum amount of congressional things we can think about and set the table for another meeting. We can accomplish a lot. Does anybody have any objection to?
I'm making an objection, I'm gonna choose.
My second.
Oh, that's, oh, sorry, a discussion. That does you favor.